Adaptability is not the enemy of excellence. Ultimately, I support a universal masking policy and I do not support the use of district funds to challenge the county mandate, but I encourage this board to provide clear, science-based policies, strong leadership, and exemplify our culture of care and our tradition of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Nesta Turner, and then on deck is Carolina Garza.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to support the mask mandate. We must have a policy for universal masking in our schools regardless of what happens in court. I stand here before you as a parent of a second grader and sixth grader in the district too young to be vaccinated. I'm an atmospheric scientist and a professor, so forgive me, I really want to tell you about source control. I really want to let you know that the people you want masked in any room are the people that are infected because in atmospheric science, we know whether it's pollution or whether it's infection, you want to filter it at the source. That's why universal masking is different than optional masking, because we don't know who's developing a case of COVID. They become contagious before they have symptoms. This is why everyone has to mask. But I didn't come here as a scientist. I came here to talk to you as a mom. I know that most of us here have children, we love our children, and I want to tell you a little bit about my son. My son has asthma. He's usually a pretty healthy guy, you know? You wouldn't notice anything unusual about him if you met him, but his lungs react really strongly to viral illnesses. So when he gets sick, even if it's from something really minor, a little cold or something, I'm usually up overnight with him, all night, maybe one to three nights, giving him breathing treatments to calm his reactive lungs. One time, when he was younger, I stayed with him in the hospital overnight when he was admitted due to respiratory distress. I remember driving to the emergency room at four o'clock in the morning, and I can tell you, when I got there, nobody asked for my insurance card. They saw my son struggling to breathe and they just took him out of my arms, these healthcare providers, and helped him. It may must go without saying, but I'm going to say it, I don't want him to get COVID. I know many of you have had scary parent moments of all magnitudes, right? I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of us have, and I know no one in here would wish that on anyone else's kid. So, with this new policy that we had, you know, over the summer that we're not going to mask, you know, we've been scrambling around in our household trying to figure out, do we, do we homeschool? Can we afford private school? Private schools are masked, you know? I've been trying to do these things, but I'm so grateful that at least temporarily, we have a mask mandate. And when it comes to such a simple intervention to make schools safer for kids, and I see resistance to it, I have to wonder, when does my kid get to go back to school safely? He deserves an education too, and we must have universal masking.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. And Carolina Garza, you were already up, there was a duplicate, so without any time to prepare, Carl Baker and Dr. Joey Bogus is next.
Hello, my name's Carl Baker. I have two students in the district, one at Cambridge Elementary and one at Alma Heights Junior School. And I just want to start off by saying thank you to all of you. I know this must be a really difficult job, especially in these times, and I sincerely believe that all of you have our children's best interest at heart. I want to go back a year, last year around this time, or I guess earlier, there was a big debate going on in this community in this country about whether to send kids back to school at all. And there were many people in our community and outside that were against opening schools to in-person education. You heard many of the same things you're hearing tonight, especially from medical professionals, that it would be unwise and unsafe, and it went against the guidance of the public health officials. In particular, the same Barrett County officials now mandating masks in our schools were against Alma Heights opening our schools last year. Looking back on the decisions that were made, I can only say that I am extremely grateful for our school district for making the right decision then, and bucking the trend, and going against the public health officials that were advocating that we keep our schools closed. Other schools made a different choice, and their, other schools made a different choice, and their students have suffered. I challenge anyone here to come and tell me that we should have done what SIA did last year. And everyone should know, the same politicians pushing for masks today were pushing to keep the schools closed last year. In the current environment, I cannot see any justification for continued masking in our schools. The science is clear that children are very little risk of COVID. This has been demonstrated in study after study. A study cited by the BBC as the most comprehensive study to date in the world found that the mortality risk through the pandemic in the United Kingdom for children was two in a million. Well, I would never want to be one of those parents. There are greater risks for our children, like swimming and riding in a motor vehicle. We do not live in a zero-risk society, and that's just a fact. And I will just say, looking back a year, there was the argument, and I agreed with it, for the parent, for the parents, the teachers, and the staff. Now we have a vaccine, things have changed. Widely available in our community, anyone who wants to get it can get it to protect them from COVID. So looking to the future, a question for those advocating for continued masking, that they need answers, when will it end? With the vaccine available, what are we waiting for? Another vaccine? Zero COVID? Do we really think we're going to eliminate COVID from the world? Or are they saying that we should be wearing masks forever? So, in conclusion, I just say, it needs to end. In my opinion, the time for it to end is now. And I thank you for your time, and I urge you to make the right decision.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Dr. Bogus, and Lisa Fox, you're on deck.
My name's Joey Bogus, alumni here, 1997, Go Mules. Appreciate everybody, I'm going to cut to the chase, I'm a facts guy, we've heard some other folks that are facts guys, facts-driven only. I'm going to give you a unique perspective on how and what I do for a living. So, I'm a environmental scientist, and I also have PhD in geography, and lo and behold, I was a environmental scientist for the Department of Defense for 15 years, traveling all over the world, working in some pretty nasty things, and experiencing things that are scary. So, to you on the board, please, you got to understand, fear is something that affects the body. We don't need to be scared. Facts, okay? Let's stick with facts. And I'm pausing because I have too much and I can't get out, I'm one of those weird nerd guys. So, if anybody would love to sit down with me afterwards and let's actually dive deep into the things, let's do it. But, I would like everybody to, if you have a pen, jot it down, his name is Dr. David E. Martin. And, let's just stick to facts. Dr. Martin is a person who is in charge of making sure that patents are just. And I have a question, if the CDC is pushing fear, then everybody can go and look up Patent Number 7220852, which is the coronavirus isolated from humans from 2003. Who owns that patent, you might say? The CDC does. So let's, I have a minute, I got you. Let's stop the fear. If the pandemic was truly ripping through the world, why do we still have a homeless population? They don't bathe, they don't mask, and they don't isolate each other. Stop the fear, let it be the parents' choice, and let's move on as a community. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dr. Bogus. Lisa Fox, and then Irene Valdez is next.
All right, y'all know me, I've been here since October. I'm surprised there's so many people now. I will not waste my breath and talk about masks and how they protect others, especially our innocent children under the age of 12 that do not have the same protection as us. I will not waste my time asking for everyone to come together and work through these last six months so that everyone that wants to get the vaccine can be, can be protected from a rapid contagious virus that chooses to be protected from it. I will not waste these things because that's all I have here, is time and breath, with or without a mask on. I can breathe and I have time to talk, so this is what I have to say. I do not have money to threaten you with, or a business to use to promote you. All I have is time and breath. So for my time, I will answer a few questions that I heard in the meeting last week. No, the school district does not have a website or a page for people to go see where and where they can apply for help to get little small things like uniforms or fees for access to activities. Your school district is not called that. And if our, if your parents have to call the counselor, if you have a counselor, they will not care if you quote their name, because they have female counselors, they have no chance. And if you want to be voted in for high schools, then stop helping the underprivileged kids here in Alma Heights. But how can you when you do not have any of these disadvantaged children represented on the school board? Based on the conversation I heard last week, there is maybe one person on the school board that understands how it is to raise children as a single parent working a 12-hour shift. And our DT program does not represent our Alma Heights diversity. And why? Because we do not have the money to pay for a test to say what we wanted to say. But if you do not have the money, you cannot get access like the rest of the parents here in Alma Heights. So if you are worried about other children's mental reaction to seeing other kids leave in the room, well then maybe the DT program should be the whole class at the elementary school starting at maybe third grade. And while you're thinking this over, you are leaders, that people look to for an example, so even children will look up to you. So set a good example for all children, not just those that can pay for your attention. Thank you.
Irene Valdez, and then next up is Kelly Allen.
My name's Irene Valdez, I'm a parent and a citizen of San Antonio. I'm here on behalf of my kids requesting that masks be made optional, not mandatory. If you bother to look on the websites, YouTube, whatever social media you want to, you can see there's videos of people wearing masks and how they, their baby, and how all this stuff comes out. So if all this stuff is coming out, and it actually goes in through chew, through the mask, it's like soaking viruses. So it doesn't make sense that that would help that much. The other thing is, you, the school board, said that you were here because your job is to focus on the needs of the children, not the needs of the doctors, not the needs of the county, the health authority, whatever, the needs of the children. The children need to have in-service teaching, they need in-school teaching, they need to be able to, be able to breathe freely without having all this bacteria that accumulates in their mask by the end of the day. It's ridiculous, some of the kids are getting sick. My child has got acne now really badly because of the mask. So it's affecting the kids, it affects their self-esteem, their outlook. The teachers, the staff, you know, these are all people that are eligible to get the vaccine if they want. If they think the vaccine works, then they should have gotten it by now. And if they haven't gotten it, then they need to get it before the school starts. The kids don't have to have the vaccine. So, you know, the kids, oh my goodness, even if they're vaccinated, they still are able to get the virus, they're still able to get that. That's why there were 74% of people that had been vaccinated that, you know, turned out positive again. So, the health authority here is saying that the vaccine, the vaccine is supposed to be a biological preparation that provides active acquired immunity to a particular infectious disease. This vaccine really doesn't do that. So, having the vaccine, making it mandatory, that's the other concern that I have for staff that are here, that I don't want the vaccine to be made mandatory because it's still experimental, it hasn't been approved by the FDA, and making them have the vaccine is, you know, against law, basically. 99% survival rate for kids, 99%, 99.9% survival rate for kids. So seriously, you know, how many kids died this last year? How many kids died? None.
Next up is Brian Herf, and then Ann David, you'll be on deck. Brian Herf is next.
Hi, I'm Brian Herf. I have a seventh grade and a ninth grade student. First, anyone hear a difference hearing speakers with and without masks? How does that translate into the classroom? It is very difficult to hear people effectively when they have masks on. That is a detriment to the instruction. The other day I attended the high school freshman prep day. Most of the faculty were not wearing masks, if they feel the need they have, if they feel the need to have one, they have the choice to do so. Since 2020, 40,000 children have passed away sadly. Only a couple hundred of them have been from COVID nationally. There are cases, but very few. In the first couple weeks of March 2020, I lost two friends back east, both in their twenties, not from COVID, but from isolating and being locked down while dealing with mental health issues. In high school, my wife lost a friend from a severe peanut allergy. A few years ago, a school near me lost four recent high school grads from overdoses in one week. We can go down the line of life risks. I've heard from several colleagues in medicine, there are beds available, but staff have been lost due to resignations over mandates. Every state across the country has gone through extremely strict and very relaxed mitigations. All have had similar absent close, dealing with the coronavirus. I could go through the difference in droplet versus airborne, and whether masks worked, and different types there are, and the numerous reports of negative effects of prolonged mask use. Throughout the summer, my children have been very anxious over the possibility of having to wear masks again. My son last year, several times, came home and said that he was told to leave the classroom because he wasn't properly wearing a mask, and was missing out on instruction and creating Over this past summer, I've traveled around the country for many sporting events, new issues, my kids have been through an entire summer of MIT, sports practice, et cetera. No mask issues, no mask, no issues. If we're implementing protocols for masks, why are we not doing the heights of home options, screening tools again last year? Why are we not shutting or reducing businesses or events? Why just masks? My main concerns are twofold. The exposure to fighting litigation with the state for defying the executive order by Governor Abbott, as he has said, he will.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herf. Ann David, and then Alfonso Acosta is next.
Hello, Board and community members. It's great to see you again. Thank you for all the work I know you've been doing. There was no summer break for most people this year. We've heard from multiple medical doctors, and I'm going to let them stay in their lane because they know what they're talking about. I also have a lane, it's an educational one, because I'm a doctor of curriculum-oriented instruction from UT Austin, Hillcom. And, remote learning was hard. Remote learning, as hard as everyone worked, and I know the teachers poured themselves into that. And we know it didn't work as well as it would have in class, we know. We know in class, because, not because of plexiglass or masks or not being able to hear people, but because of quarantines and substitutes and having to leave the classroom, students didn't get the educational experience even when they were in schools. We tried hard, and we did really good work. And we need kids in schools. I agree with them. All of the research that was done this summer, with all of the test scores that came out, really says that, again, I'm not going to say kids are behind, we made the rules, we made the standards, we can change them, and when everybody's behind, it's not the same. That said, we do want them to experience the kind of learning that they can get with professionals in the classroom. I do have that fancy PhD, and my kids were home and they didn't get the same experience because I didn't teach middle school. I don't have an elementary certification, right? So they didn't get the experience they would have in the classroom, as good as their teachers are. So the way we do that, the way we reduce absences and disruptions to learning, is universal masking, as the medical doctors have said. And I think that's the important part to remember. As I was preparing for the meeting, I was actually looking at the profile of the learner, and this moment, this line struck me, that students are to display grit and resilience in the face of challenge. Wow, what an 18 months we've had. And they have, they have done that. They have displayed grit and resilience over and over and over and over again. They showed up, they wore masks, it sucks, I get it, but they showed up. Or they stayed home and they were online and it wasn't fun, and they did it anyway. The kids did that, with a grace I am jealous of. And I think we can honor them by getting them back in schools, by keeping the masks on, by getting them in those teachers, and by keeping everybody as safe as possible. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. David. Alfonso Acosta, and then Alma Peet is next.
I'm also a parent here in Alma Heights School District. I have a seventh grader and a fifth grader. My seventh grader is vaccinated and my fifth grader is not. I have listened to the special school board meeting that was held a little bit ago. Thank you, by the way, for posting all these things online, very helpful. And I took away a lot. I took away a lot of the work that you guys did to make last year safe. I took away a lot of the work that you're still continuing to do to move forward. But there were two things in particular that I took away from it. One was that last year, we had little to no transmission at school, and that is quite an accomplishment for what was happening last year. And y'all should be rightly proud of what you did to make that happen. But I took away another thing as well, that we did see transmission at home, primarily among siblings. That was the only time that we saw transmission within the school, and the assumption was made that that happened at home. And so my concern is my seventh grader who's vaccinated and my fifth grader who is not, having the same thing play out this year. Transmission happening at home. So I know we've talked a lot about vaccinations and stuff, I don't know all the data that the doctors, but I do know one thing. I know that the people that are vaccinated do not get as sick as the people who are not vaccinated. Yes, maybe the vaccination does not stop the virus, but it definitely keeps you healthier than if you didn't have it. So I have my seventh grader who has that protection and my fifth grader who doesn't. I know we can't control that, I know we have to wait for vaccines, but in the meantime, what we can do is help protect all of our kids at school with universal masking, with all of the tried and true procedures that we used last year, and we know it worked. So that's what I'm encouraging. I'd like to just say one more thing. Talking about facts, and the fact is that our pediatric ICUs are getting full. They're not getting full because it's the same virus that we saw before, it's a new variant. I don't know all the ins and outs of what the new variant is, but I can do the bottom line, which is, if my kid happens to play football and happens to get hurt, there is no PICU bed for him because it's full right now. And the best way for us to help our children, not the doctors, and not, not all those other people that people are saying, to help our children, is to make sure that those resources are available for our children. And the best way to do that is with all the procedures that we know worked last year. So thank you for your hard work, please keep doing it, and thank you for your time.
As second grader, she's in the Spanish program, she had a great year, she made friends, she enjoyed learning, she's excited to go back this year, in fact, she's meeting her teacher across the way right now. And she did all of that in a mask, and had a fantastic experience. But as school starts next week, I can't be but a little bit concerned about her safety and anxious for all the students in Alma Heights and the Pinnell School District. At this time last year, there was a much less infectious variant of SARS-CoV-2 circulating in our community. Less infectious and less severe in terms of the disease that it caused. And at that time, the school started the virtual learning. When the transition was made to in-person learning, it was with universal masking, and it worked. Of course, over the year, we got these sporadic emails about cases in the school as they popped up, but really, kids were able to stay in person, they were able to learn, and they were able to succeed. And as far as I'm aware, there hasn't, there wasn't any significant in-school spread. And that is because of the policies that were in place last year. Now fast forward to this year, there's a much more infectious variant which is dominant in our community, causing more severe disease in adults and children. And as our ICU beds overflow and our hospitals are at capacity or above, I'm concerned that the decisions that are being made are being made for political reasons rather than the health and safety of our students. My daughter is not old enough to receive a vaccine, and therefore, the only mechanisms available to protect her are masking and hand hygiene. But the good news is, we know that those things work. They worked last year, and they will work again, but only if widely adopted. So, I ask you to take action on behalf of our children and ensure that this year, social distancing is respected, hand hygiene is encouraged, and masking is universal. As physicians, all we do is meet people when they come to us with disease already in process and try our best to restore them to health. And with the current variant, we're not very good at that. But you have the opportunity to be proactive and make a difference in our community and head off disease before it starts. And so I would ask you to do that and keep our children, our teachers, our staff, and our community safe. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Peet. Minette Song, and then Carlos Cifuentes is on deck.
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I stand here as an Alma Heights citizen, I stand here as a pediatrician, I stand here as a pediatric critical care physician who works in this community, and I stand here as the grandmother of a child who has the privilege of going to Cambridge, Ellen Green, she's there meeting her teachers. I want to speak to the facts, and people have mentioned facts. The facts that have been reported about COVID in children are the facts that were reported early on in the pandemic. I believe that those facts will not stand, that that won't be the reality of the future. The data that we have from the past, we prepared significantly for COVID, we thought, oh my gosh, this is going to be terrible. And it wasn't, we really didn't see a huge admission rate, we didn't see badness, but subsequently, we saw what's called MISC, if anyone wants to look that up. Those children who actually had COVID who were not sick with COVID, but developed multi-system inflammatory syndrome, and can be critically ill and terribly ill, and they had evidence in their immunity that shows that they had COVID, but they weren't sick with COVID. But now, we actually are seeing children admitted critically ill with COVID, with COVID pneumonia, with COVID multi-system disease. I'd say a third of my ICU is full of children with COVID who are critically ill, on the ventilator, some of them are on heart pump machines. It's going to be, it's going to be serious, and there's going to be different data that's going to be presented. The people in my ICU, the nurses are amazing, the beds are full, I work every day to figure out where can children go in the community or to other cities, and it's not because there's not staffing, those people are there, they're doing the job, they're doing the best they can do, they're doing amazing jobs. I believe that this is going to be significant in pediatrics, and I ask for universal masking for any opportunity that we have to try to avoid exposure for our children, for our families, for our community, regardless of what the politicians say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Song. Carlos Cifuentes, and Ann Aguiar, you're on deck.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the members of the board for this opportunity to speak to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the members of the board for this opportunity to speak to you, for this outdoor setting. I love taking off my mask whenever conditions permit me to. But I wear it when I don't know how close I'm going to be to others. I have two daughters at home, both in the district, one sixth grader, one tenth grader. The sixth grader, it has an autoimmune condition that we're treating. The tenth grader caught bacterial pneumonia the month, the March before last when we were in New York City. And I probably don't have to say how on edge we were before we knew that it wasn't COVID. It was the time we were flying to New York and all the coverage was showing stock market diving and things closing. So needless to say, we didn't get to see Hamilton, but we got back and we got to see some of the first protocols in San Antonio played out to get our daughter into a plastic-lined ambulance met by a plastic-lined doctor, received by a plastic-lined personnel at the hospital, and over the course of two days to live a plastic-lined life lined with PPE and uncertainty. I can't add to any that the medical professionals have already shared here tonight. I believe the facts they say, that they state, the way they characterize the current risk and current limitations in our assistance to provide for the health of ourselves and the people we love and know. I don't, it's not lost on me that those, I think, most of the comments made tonight highlighting that risk are probably see the effects of the disease more often than the general population. And so I take that heart and wisdom as such, and I don't, stating it and acknowledging it, I don't believe that I'm spreading fear. I just, that's why I begin from a factual standpoint. But I echo the comments of a friend of mine who said that I stand here hoping that the district's board members, which it goes without saying are at the helm of the district that's the envy of the area. I didn't go to school here, but I got here as fast as I could, and it's been worth every bit of the housing premium to be here. I know I'm not in real estate, so I don't enjoy that, you know, that premium. But that masks, I believe, if the policy is going to protect, best protect the safety of our children, those who can't yet take a vaccine if they wanted to, I hope that the board takes steps to retain that discretion and that ability to implement a policy, even if other levels of authority might be at odds with each other, because every... Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Carlos Cepuentes. Ann Aguiar is up, and Tamara Simpson will be our last speaker of the evening.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak with you all tonight. I am an Alma Heights mom. I'm the mother of a senior in high school this year. I've got two that have already graduated. And I'm here to express my support for science, for thoughtful consideration of the clinicians' voices that we've heard tonight. And I thank them all for the work that they do. And I'm here to express my support for the continued use of masks as long as science deems it necessary to keep our children safe, our teachers safe, and our staff safe. I also completely agree with the argument saying that what we need is a really thoughtful policy on this, a thoughtful, defensible policy that we can stand behind and understand as a community. At Heights, we teach our kids to be good citizens, to be compassionate and humble, and to do the right thing even when no one is watching. I think asking our kids to make small sacrifices, like wearing a mask to keep their friends, their teachers, and their staff safe at school, that's a small ask, even for young children. And it's a lesson that's very much in line with what this community and this school stands for. As I said, I have a senior in high school who desperately wants to have this last year, picking wants to experience this in-person in as normal a setting as possible. We've all experienced the loss of in-person learning, and none of us want to go back to that. He recognizes, he doesn't love the idea of wearing a mask, but he certainly recognizes that wearing a mask could enable a soccer season, a full soccer season. It could enable strings concerts in person. It could enable full access to the rocketry lab and all those things that he desperately wants to have as part of this community and as part of his last year. So Paul, my son, is more than willing to make the sacrifice of wearing a mask if it means keeping his teachers safe, keeping his classmates safe, and the staff at the school safe, and also giving them some normalcy in terms of in-person education. So I thank you all. This is kind of a thankless job. I hope you feel thanked tonight because you are doing amazing work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. V. Tamara Simpson.
Okay. My name's Tamara Simpson. I am a pulmonary critical care physician here in the city, and also, my kids are in the district. I have a senior, Hannah, who plays for varsity soccer, and Lindsay, who also plays varsity soccer. She's a sophomore. I recognize many parents around here. Some of us see eye to eye on politics, some of us don't. But what I do see eye to eye on is that COVID affects all of us. I get phone calls on a daily and nightly basis from these families who have become infected. And I don't judge. I help these people. This is not about vaccines. I'm not going to mandate or request that we mandate vaccines. This is about a dress code. Part of a dress code, masking during a pandemic, that's it. I used to work at UT for years and years. Those folks are my colleagues. They're the best in the city and the state. You should listen to them. When Dr. Bowling speaks from an ID perspective, you should listen. There's, it's just not disputable. I missed last year's meeting because I was taking care of COVID patients, and I was proud to do so. This year, I'm proud to be here because I was asked to be here, and I'm off work tonight. This year is different. Now we're taking care of patients mostly for a preventable disease. I work at the hospital closest to this campus. I see you guys. I see your family members, and I take care of each and every one of them. And I have and I will continue to do so, vaccinated or not vaccinated. As far as vaccinations or not vaccinations, if you've had COVID before, you can still get COVID and you can still suffer serious illness and die, as did a very recent patient of mine. There's another prominent figure in our, that I've seen mentioned on social media, a very prominent figure in our society that we have lost in the last week that I had the honor of caring for. He was vaccinated. He was a seventy-five-year-old grandparent who got sick. We don't know if it was from a child or from a patient who was taken care of. He died. I took care of him. He died. He was vaccinated because he was older and had other problems. As far as you saying that kids don't die from this because that's what we're worried about here, you're right. Kids most likely will not die from COVID. Who will die are the parents and grandparents that they go home to. I'm asking for masks. Vaccines are up to you. Masks are easy, and it's just a dress code. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. That concludes the citizens-to-be-heard part of our meeting. Again, we are sincerely grateful for each and every one of you who came to speak and who came to listen. We truly value your input. Thank you for taking the time and how to grieve me to be here. We are now, because it's awfully hot, we're going to take a five-minute break. You are welcome to use restrooms in the cafeteria if you would like, or if you're not interested in the rest of the business part, you're welcome.